Good morning. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing for August 24th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID-19 pandemic until April 1st, 2022. This virtual hearing is being livestreamed and recorded via WebEx. This, in order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the Public Notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively muted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project, that is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Your Hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, click the Participant Information icon. From there, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *3 to raise your hand. Again, plus, press *3 to raise your hand if you are connected by telephone. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Rogiro, sorry, Rogiro reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called. Also, once you have spoken, please put your hand down so that there is not confusion for the next case and subsequent cases, because some days we've seen hands raised all day. So please, please pay attention to that. I'm just going to take a roll call, Mr. Ehrlich.
Yes, I'm here.
Excellent. And Mr. Rogiro?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Rogiro is today acting, is acting secretary. Ms. Dong?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Robinson.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Morning, Mr. Kendall. I know Mr. Kendall sometimes has audio issues or connectivity issues, so please let me know when he is onboard so we can confirm that this is a full, a full board. Is there a representative from the BPDA on today? Okay, we know that Mr. Hampton is on vacation, so I guess there is no BPDA representation. So, Mr. Rogiro, it's yours.
Good morning. The first order of business is their approval of the hearing minutes for February 23rd, June 8th, and June 22nd, 2021. Can I have a motion?
I think you stole my thought from me.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling first case for extension, BOA 9217796. Address is 775 Morton Street in Ward 14. This is the first extension. It's due to expire on August 30th, 2021.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulcini on behalf of the applicant, Anthony Rishido. As Mr. Rogiro stated, this is due to expire at the end of this month. Due to COVID, there's been a significant delay. The plans are with ISD, so we're asking for a small extension just so we can get those plans out and receive our permit.
May I have a motion for a one-year extension?
All moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Jean.
Jean, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next case, BOA 928836, 28 Monument Square in Ward 2. This case will, this extent, this permit will expire on September 20th, 2021. It is their first extension.
Hi, this is Jeff Harris for 28 Monument Square. Yeah, just, we were approved in late September of 2019. Had meetings scheduled with the BPDA to, for another height variation because they had to approve what the zoning board approved. That meeting was delayed till January and then postponed again. And then we were in March of 2020.
So, Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris, hold on. We understand that COVID has had an impact on your project, so we're going to give you a one-year extension. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, the companion cases, BOA 7891640 Rug Road in Ward 22 and BOA 78918780 Braintree Street in Ward 22. This is the first extension. It is, it was due to expire in July 13th, 2020, but it is told due to the executive orders. Name and address for the record.
Good morning. Chris Ranier from Goldstone Stores on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, members of the board. As stated, these are companion cases for the development of a project. The tolling act extended the lapse date until October of this year, and we are working to close a construction loan and are confident and optimistic about commencing construction, but we respectfully request a one-year extension of the told lapse date to make sure we have some elbow room to commence the project.
So, Mr. Ranier, did it expire then in 2020 or 2021?
It would have expired in 2020 during the state of emergency, but the tolling acted.
Hold on. May I have a motion for an extension from today's date, please?
Motion to extend for a year from today's date.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling first case for Board of Final Arbiter, BOA 1066920, 532 to 534 East Third Street in Ward 6. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, the purpose of this hearing is to perfect the record with respect to the plan set. This matter was approved by the board on October 6th of 2020. It was later noted by the IST Plans Examiner that the plans displayed on that day were not the updated set that had been submitted prior to the hearing. Both the Plans Examiner and I subsequently reviewed the video of the October 6th hearing and concurred that my description of the project and all relevant zoning matters was accurate and in conformance with the operative plan set, which is presented here for display and viewing by the board today. These revised plans depict-
Hold on, Mr. Marancy. Mr. Robinson, have you seen the revised plans?
Yes, I reviewed the revised plans.
And is it fairly in conformance with the presentation?
Yes, it appears to be.
Okay, may I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling next case, Board of Final Arbiter, BOA 1044698, 512 to 514 Popular Street in Ward 18. Name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulcini with the business address of 10 Forbes Road in Braintree on behalf of the applicant for requesting this BFA. This project was approved back on July 21st, 2020. At the time of the approval, the approval was subject to BPDA Design Review. There was some, there was some conversation after the approval that stated lowering the building height. We went back as a team. We met with BPDA Design and we were able to bring the building down into compliance at 31, 33 feet. And those plans are with the board this afternoon, this morning, sorry.
Yes, thanks. Don't, don't jump ahead, please, for us. So, so has anything changed beside the height? Has the number of-
Yes, we've also, I could, I could list it. So what we have is a garage ceiling, first floor elevations, we reduced by six inches. Second floor elevations reduced by six inches. Third floor elevations reduced by six inches. We reduced the slope of the roof and we reduced the, the height of the ridge height. And that was overall led to a foot and, one foot 11 inches brought down. Through the process, we also narrowed the building. But, Madam Chair, one of the things was, you know, there was parking underneath the building in a garage because of the lot width, which is 40 feet. It's consistent with all the lots in that neighborhood, so that only to BPDA Design Review, there was no way to get a driveway to go on the side of the building. So, that's kind of where we're at, which is what, you know, the other buildings, the other neighborhood houses in that neighborhood have parking in front of their property, which obviously, as you all know, would trigger another violation before the zoning board.
And so, on the record, you're stating that there is no way to accommodate that, those vehicles at the side of the building?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, Ms., I know Ms. Better walks down the street from there, so I don't know if she left you a note, Mr. Robinson?
I did not see a note from, but I, I mean, I have reviewed the plans. Obviously, I wasn't part of the original hearing and, I mean, the plans are consistent with the note as the Mr. Pulcini has referenced. But the parking is, I mean, it does still show the garage, obviously, entrance and some of the access point.
Okay, may I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling last case for Board of, calling last case for Board of Final Arbiter, BOA 9407181524, VFW Parkway in Ward 20.
Yeah, hello. Good morning, members of the board. Madam Chair, this is Mike Ross with the business address of One International Place on behalf of the applicant. You may recall, this matter was before the board and approved in December of last year. This was cannabis establishment originally for, approved for a basement condition of around 4,200 square feet. And at the time, you may remember that Mr. Rogiro and Mr. Legros both commented on the basement issue. It was really the, one of the only comments about it. And in short, we're here today because we agree. Beacon Compassions was able to renegotiate its lease with its landlord and move to an upper floor. The size actually was reduced to around 3,000 square feet, but it's a much better layout. We don't have any of the access issues. It just works a lot better.
Ross, I just want to clarify. So you're requesting a move from 4,200 square feet in the basement to the first floor occupancy of 3,000 square feet?
Of approximately 3,000 square feet. That's correct, Madam Chair. And just one other item there is there was a proviso that related to that lift that we're no longer using and the two handicap spaces. So I just, you know, maybe that gets converted to like BPDA design. That's up to you, but I just wanted to flag that for you.
I thought we had also requested screening and buffering on that lot as a proviso?
It wasn't there. There was, there was sign review, design review. This applicant only lift. And then there was the, the two handicap spaces because of the lift.
Madam Chair, I think in the design review, we mentioned-
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly. So, may I have a motion, please, to approve this trans, this, this decrease in size from 4,200 to approximately 2, 3,000 to the first floor? And put a little bit more clarification on the provisos?
I'll make a motion to approve this change and to clarify the provisos that it's BPDA Designer who review with specific attention of signage and screening and buffering.
Is there a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Before we get on, I just want to confirm that Mr. Kendall is on?
He does not appear to be on, Madam Chair. This is Tom.
Can somebody please contact him?
Yeah, I already, I reached out to the administrative staff to contact Mr. Kendall.
Okay, so, so just for clarification to all the people who are here for the hearings that we have a six-member board and we are going to proceed with that. That means that for a project to be approved, you need five members in support. Okay, please go ahead, Mr. Rogiro.
Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the 930 cases?
Yes, Mr. Rogiro, Attorney Feaster, 9 Downer Court.
Calling BOA, calling case BOA 1170542, 9 Downer Court in Ward 15.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, member of the boards, Joseph Feaster from the law firm of McKenzie and Associates, 183 State Street in Boston, 02109. My client has been in discussion with two neighborhood groups regarding this particular project. Recently, there was discussion about some revisions to the plans that they needed to further discuss with the neighborhood groups and wanted to get as shorter deferral as possible in order to be able to do this. This is our first request for defer.
Um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please, Mr. Rogiro?
October 19th, at 12:30.
Okay, we'll see you then in the fall, Mr. Feaster?
In terms of that's right, and I would definitely make sure I'm dressed for the occasion. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Any other deferrals or withdrawals, mind me?
Mr. Secretary Dennis Quilty, attorney, asking for a deferral on 215 West Newton Street.
Calling case BOA 1035651, 215 West Newton Street in Ward 4.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Chair, seeking a deferral, first-time request for additional community outreach. We can, we reached out to the mayor's office to let them know early on that we'd be asking a deferral. The other reason is the applicant, the owner of the property, is away on a long-planned family vacation to the West Coast, so he's not able to be available. We'd be asking for a deferral and be ready to go forward at that time.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please?
October 19th at 12:30.
Excellent. See you then, Mr. Quilty.
Thank you.
Any other deferrals or withdrawals for 930?
Madam Chair, members of the board, 87 to 89 West Walnut Park.
Mr. Christopher, is this for a deferral?
Yes, please.
Okay, so while, so go ahead, Mr. Rogiro.
BOA, calling case BOA 1152401, 87 to 89 West Walnut Park in Ward 11.
So, may, so yes, please put your name and address on the record and we'll go straight to a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, James Christopher, RCLC with the business address of 1154 Dorchester Ave, requesting administrative deferral for 87 to 89 West Walnut.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries. The date?
October 19th at 12:30.
Okay, we'll see you then, Mr. Christopher.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other deferrals or withdrawals for 930? Hearing, we'll go to BOA, first case BOA 1191845142, Prince Street in Ward 3. The violations, violations, Article 54, Section 10, floor area ratio excessive, Article 54, Section 18, roof structure restriction, Article 32, Section 04, G-Cott applicability, proposed work to include fourth floor addition to the building along with a roof deck and add a living space in the basement. This application is with zoning refusal and variance needed. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. William Farullo, Law Office, 28 State Street, Boston, Mass. Also on the line are the owners, which are Charlie Reed, Ingrid Begston, who is also the architect of this project. This is a building in the north end that is-
So, hold on, Mr. Farullo. Christian, are you on?
Yes, I am. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Grommer Trust, and we have both the BWSC and No Harm Letters.
And we have both letters in the file.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Farullo, it looks like there's a lot happening in this building. First, can you tell us what the occupancy is of this, of this, this address?
Yes, the, the occupancy is a three-family and it will remain a three-family, but be reconfigured. The, the process of doing that, this, this building was principally unoccupied when it was purchased this past year. Sign for the building keeps it a three-family by taking the lower level, the lower level, which is approximately four and a half feet above ground at the front, but above ground on the side and on the rear where it's a nine and a half foot ceiling height in the lower level, full access to a rear yard. Windows on, on three of the sides of that level. That'll be a single apartment with two bedrooms. The next level up will remain as it is, a two-bedroom apartment. Then the next two levels will be joined with a rooftop addition. The building currently, that blue area is a headhouse. It is not currently habitable. We're proposing to extend that over between the walls with the two adjoining buildings for an area of approximately 296 square feet to join with the bottom two floors as the owner's unit. That unit would be 2,000 square feet. Third unit, this will have a deck on the top.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson? Because, tell us about that basement occupancy.
Yep. So, you know, it's not, it does have a, appear to have, per the drawings, full kind of access out of the rear of the building. So it's, it's one of these where it's higher at the street, lower at the back. So the, the bedroom units are pushed to that side. So I think there's, you know, there's full access in the rear. It's not, those bedroom units are not below grade.
And that roof, the roof addition, let's see, Ms. Edwards, can you scroll back a little bit because on the rendering, hold on, just, you just passed it from the rendering. It looks pretty massive. How does it feel right there? How does it feel?
So, I mean, it is consistent. You can see the building to the left of it with the yellow top, which is existing. So they are picking up that roof line and bringing it across and kind of completing that height. So I think in terms of its immediate contents, I think it's actually pretty consistent with the existing buildings. And the ones actually around are a little bit taller, actually, a story or two. So I feel comfortable with the approximate massing of that top.
Okay, is anybody here to speak? Any questions from the board? Sorry about that. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Armando from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This project has received support from both the North End Neighborhood Waterfront Council and the North End Neighborhood Residents Association. And at this time, our office likes to go on record in support of this project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support.
Madam Chair, I do have a raised hand. Caller 10, you've been unmuted. Are you here to give testimony for this proposal? The number is 857353. Have you been unmuted? Never mind.
Madam Chair, just for the record, we have one letter, one letter of opposition in the file.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
Yes, and the BPDA recommendation is for a special attention to the roof deck setback and no building code relief.
I will add those to that BPDA review with special attention to the roof deck setback and with no building code relief.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next, calling the next case, BOA 1199022, 705 to 711 Boilston Street. The violation is Article 8, Section 3, conditional uses, takeout, takeout purpose. Capital One Banking Center, change of occupancy to include bank with takeout use. Tenet will renovate the existing retail location on basement, first, second, and second floors. Work to include build-out of bank drywall, electric, electrical and fire alarm, sprinklers, plumbing, A-trac, and finished work. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members. This is Dennis Quilty, attorney of 28 State Street, representing the applicant. With, with me this morning, I hope, are on Frank Del Giudice from Capital One and Susannah Chan, who's the project architect. This is a, a change of location. Basically, this existing store, bank, and Pete's Coffee combination exists one block west at the corner of Fairfield Street presently. That lease is up. They were looking for a new location. The present location is literally one block east at the corner of Exeter Street. It's the former Tannery Building across from the Lenox Hotel, which has always been a retail commercial space. The applicant seeks to occupy for the very same purpose which it did at the other end of the block. So it's a Capital One Bank with a Pete's Coffee facility inside for people to sit around, et cetera.
Got it. So, hold on, hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. No questions on the proposed project.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, I do have one raised hand. We don't have a left that's presenting.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for the record, say that we did meet with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay and received the-
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Quilty. Hold on, let me just- Hold on, hold on, Mr. Quilty, hold on, let me just, since we are in the process of hearing from people, I'd like to hear from community, okay?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my number is representing the carpenter's union, would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. And Conrad, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Um, Madam Secretary, members of the board, my name is Conrad Armstrong from four thirty-nine Marlboro Street, um, representing the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. The applicant did meet with us and we do not oppose this case.
Okay. Anybody from the electeds, uh, elected officials? Okay, hearing done, uh, may I have a motion, please?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Madam Chair, may I just say, this, this should be Back Bay Architectural Commission, um, exterior review.
For signage, I assume.
Yes, yes, but, but we, we gave you a blanket approval, so you will...
Okay, we'll take it.
Good luck.
We'll take it.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Calling next case, BOA one-two-zero-five-six-four-nine-two-seventeen Newbury Street in Ward five. Uh, violation is Article six, Section four, other conditions, uh, purpose to remove the proviso takeout use as granted to this petitioner only, for this use only, from BZC dash, uh, dash three-two-seven-two-five, no work to be done. Name and address to look for the records. Anyone on for this case? Madam Chair, should be...
Dennis, are you on for this case?
They didn't check in, and I don't see their name, um, the applicant's name in the attendee section either.
Can you check?
Oh, hold on, there's someone, oh, sorry, I can talk. Yin Zeng is here, one second. Okay, Yin Zeng, you, you've been unmuted, can you hear us? Are you here for this proposal?
Yes, yes, I do. Sorry about that, uh, so, uh, that is our, uh, alternative. Uh, and I'm the owner of the, of the, of the two, uh, two-seventeen Newbury Street in, uh, the Boston Massachusetts, uh, zero-two-one, uh, zero-two-one-six.
Could you please tell us then what is proposed for that space?
Yes, we, we are trying to remove the, uh, we're trying to remove the takeout, uh, takeout use granted to this, uh, uh, petitioner only for...
What, what is the new takeout use? Is there gonna be a takeout use?
Uh, it's a tea store, it's a, like a tea store.
Is it a bubble tea? And what's the name, what's the name of the store?
It's called a Super Emoji.
Super Emoji is the new name?
Yes.
Okay, and you are familiar with the takeout language?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any other Super Emojis in the city?
Uh, no, this is the only one.
Okay, so, please make sure you check in with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, so you get very familiar with the takeout language.
Okay.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are good, no question.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Molly Griffin with the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, um, who did not oppose their plan, so our office would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with the usual takeout language for this applicant only.
Okay, this applicant only, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Calling next case, BOA one-two-one-three-one-five-four, two-forty-seven Newbury Street in Ward five. Uh, violation is Article eight, Section seven, conditional use, fitness, uh, fitness gyms are the conditional use in a B-three-sixty-five district. Purpose added gym, studio to existing occupancy. Name and address for the record.
Ms. Edwards, Ms. Edwards, can you zoom in? Thank you so much. Um, okay, go ahead, um, Madam Ambassador.
Sorry, we had a real nice, um, Saturday check-in, but I don't see him here. I'm not sure if anyone else is on the call.
Okay, okay, uh, let's move to the next case, I'm sorry.
Calling next case, BOA one-one-nine-four-six-seven-three, thirty-three Eastman Street, Ward seven. Violations are Article sixty-five, Section nine, residential dimension regulations, insufficient side yard setback, ten-foot requirement. We have, uh, purpose, we have an existing short-term permit for renovations on third floor. We removed the sheet rock on the third floor and discovered the roof is badly rotted, we are requesting to amend the permit to add an eight-foot-by-six-foot shed door. Name and address for the record. Anyone on for thirty-three Eastman Street? Eric Byrne?
They haven't checked in as well, and I don't have, I don't see their name here.
Okay, then let's move, move on to Morrissey Boulevard, sorry about that.
Calling next case, BOA one-two-one-zero-zero-three-two, four-oh-one-A William P. Morrissey Boulevard in Ward thirteen. Violation to Article ten, Section one, limitations of off-street parking areas, limitation of area accessory uses are not allowed in a required front yard area. Uh, Article sixty-five, Section nine, residential dimensional regulations, front yard setback requirements is insufficient. Direct garage, the purpose is to erect a garage in the rear. Name and address for the record.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci, I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Jim Grossman and his wife Lisa, who own and plan to reside at four-oh-one Morrissey Boulevard with their five children, which they're currently in the process of renovating in conformance with code requirements. As part of the site renovation, they seek to add an accessory parking garage in the rear yard of the property. Property fronts on and is, of course, addressed on Morrissey Boulevard. There is a longtime curb cut, uh, existing on Morrissey Boulevard, which provides vehicular access to, but not from Morrissey Boulevard. Access to the property is achieved via Fox Point Road, private way with right of public access, which terminates before and connects with Morrissey Boulevard for pedestrians only, after an approximately four-foot grade drop. So while this is officially a corner lot, it is one which exists on a private way and on a corner with no meaningful connection to the intersecting public way, namely Morrissey Boulevard. I relate all this because...
Just, uh, ask this, Mr. Moranci, was this project before the board before?
No, there was a garage, uh, there was a garage, uh, across, uh, I'm sorry, next to the property, which is shown uh, on the, 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 the plans view that's showing on the screen now, um, you can see, um, a garage, and then there's another view which shows a second garage. So there was a garage on Fox Point Road, uh, that was at the board, uh, a few months ago, I think, but not, but not this address.
Okay, so this...
And I related the...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I, I just related the information about the, about Fox Point Road being the, uh, the side street, uh, because the citations here, obviously, uh, which, um, you know, seem somewhat curious for front yard setback violations and, uh, accessory uses in front yards. So, um, the fact of the matter is, uh, the zoning, uh, sub-district here is, uh, one of seven thousand. The property is in fact a single-family dwelling. So the two violations cited arise under Article ten, Section one, and Article sixty-five, Section nine.
Say, hold on, Mr. Moranci, Mr. Moranci, let me just ask you, is that an existing curb cut? And what, and, and, or is it a proposed curb cut? And what is the whiff of that, what curb cut?
Uh, the, uh, I have to look at the plans myself in my own computer. The, um... The whiff is... There, there, there's really not much of a, a meaningful curb there, there, there is, so it, it is existing in the sense that, that there's really no, um, no built-up curb, this is a private way. Uh, so it, it's, it's less a matter of a curb cut than simply the location of a garage, uh, you know, with the garage door on Fox Point Road. Again, um, Fox Point Road provides vehicular access only down for, uh, the, um, the buildings, the residential buildings that, uh, but on Fox Point, it does not connect, uh, for vehicular access to Morrissey Boulevard. Uh, if, uh, if members want to go onto Google Street View...
Yeah, Mr. Moranci, please, hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the, the plans are fine, you, I, you know, I live in this area, I'm very familiar with this. I mean, Fox Point Road is a, is a small private way, um, and it, it does not, uh, have curbing on it, so this is, uh, you know, a paving right into a garage. Um, I mean, I think the, I'm a little curious, you know, the garage, the size of the garage seems, uh, large, um, especially based on the garage sitting next to it, um, and I guess I just would like to understand a little bit more. It's showing, I believe, um, a six-car capacity, um, with a lift system in it, if, if I'm not mistaken. And I guess I just wanted to make sure I'm reading the plans correctly and understanding that. And I guess, uh, I'll be interested to hear the, the, the sort of, um, the neighborhood in terms of the abutter support on this fairly small, uh, driveling, um, later, but if you can clarify that, Mr. Moranci, please.
I, I will certainly. The garage size, Mr. Robinson, is approximately thirty by thirty-five feet with a mean height of approximately fifteen feet, and it is, as you noted, designed to accommodate a hydraulic lift system, since my college ha, uh, clients have college-age children. The size of the garage is not a subject of the requested relief. Uh, the two violations for which variances are requested are, uh, variance under Article ten, Section one. Uh, the Article ten variance, uh, is cited owing to the location of the garage, or, or it's called under the code.
Sorry, Mr. Moranci. Uh, uh, yes, got it, cause I, yes, you're right. Uh, because this is, uh, two, theoretically, two front yards, so...
Correct.
We got it, okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal? Madam Chair. Okay.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, this is Joe McGeadmore with City Council, Frank Vega's office. Um, we are going on record in opposition, um, based on the abutter, um, the abutters being not in support of the project as well.
And is there a basis for lack of support?
Uh, I think size and not having a curb cut, just, I don't know, I, I don't think they were just too keen on it, was the impression I got, so.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have, uh, several raised hands.
Sorry, I, I missed my turn.
Oh, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, um, speaking, this is George Quinn, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, speaking on behalf of my predecessor, Pat Fandel, for this specific project. Um, the applicant notified abutters and has presented to the Civic Association multiple times. Um, and this is an amendment to a previously issued permit, so at this time, our office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Okay. And I have a few raised hands. Um, Matthew, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I am Matt Russell, eight Fox Point Road in Dorchester. And, uh, I'm just going on record in opposition to this, this is not a house on Fox Point Road, and the design of this house, uh, could easily have accommodated entry and exit via Morrissey Boulevard. This was presented to us last year, refused by the Civic Association, the builder said, "I'm going to go as of right", and now we're a year later asking for the same thing, so we're saying no.
Thank you.
Okay. Andrew, you've been unmuted, can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, thank you, my name is Andrew Donovan, eleven Fox Point Road, I'm right next to the project. Uh, thank you for hearing me, Ma, Ma, Madam Chair. Very briefly, the four-oh-one home had a two-car, two-car garage on the lower level. The proponent ripped it out to create living space. Then he decided to build the house much larger and longer without a variance by declaring the entire lower level, which had three bedrooms, two baths, and the, and the two-car garage, to be cellar storage. The lower level is the only conforming space on that site to have a garage. The ceiling has been raised three feet higher, it could now accept the largest of SUVs, and you could fit three or four of them there easily. There's no need...
So, so, thank you. Um, and please, anybody who's already spoken, please lower your hand so we know who is, uh, still, still up to speak, okay?
Thank you. Okay, Donna, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name's Donna Blais McCoggan, I live at two-oh-three Seven Hill Avenue.
Let's see, split some hands.
And I'm, and I'm, uh, voicing, and, uh, my position as opposed to this, um, this garage. I'm also a member of the great, of the Seven Hill Civic Association Executive Board and the Planning Committee. We've reviewed these plans, we have opposed, uh, the, uh, garage and the oversized, uh, home that they're building down there.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
So let me ask for, I see a, a number of additionally raised hands. Please put your name and address on the record, and, um, if you have new information, add it. If you don't, it's okay to just put your name and address on the record and say you're, that you're either opposed or in support, okay?
All right, Farida Davis, go ahead.
Well, I oppose this garage. I agree with Mr. Russell and Mr. Donovan. I live at...
Name and address on the record.
Yes, I'm Farida Davis, I live at eighteen Fox Point Road, and I'm facing this huge building in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm against, I'm against it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christopher, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Christopher Redman, I'm with the firm of Prince Label Ty at Warner National Place, Suite thirty-seven-hundred. Uh, my firm actually represents Mr. Andrew Donovan, who already spoke on this meeting, and again, just reiterating his position to the project.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Minor, you've been unmuted?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Perez, representing the carpenter's union, would like to go on record in support, and would like to echo the sentiment of the Mayor's office, thank you.
Okay, and, um, one more, caller twenty-two, you've been unmuted. Eight-five-seven-two-three-six?
Oh, my God.
Hi. Are you, are you here to speak for this proposal?
I already, uh, uh, opposed this, uh, proposal, um, with a cross, just concerned about the view.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, um, Ms. Ambassador, is that everybody?
Yes, it is.
Please, everybody who has your hands up, please put them down so we know that, uh, we don't get confused down the road. Um, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
May I, uh, Madam Chair, may I, uh, rebut and speak?
Yes, briefly, please.
Uh, again, Madam, George Moranci, uh, just to crystallize this, uh, we're talking about, um, a garage structure with a mean height of approximately fifteen feet, the dimensions here are not in violation of the code. Uh, the violations here accrue to the fact that ISD is regarding Fox Point Road as a front yard to the building, when it is in fact clearly, uh, the side yard area of the building. But for the location on Morrissey Boulevard, to which Fox Point Road does not even connect, uh, these two violations would not have been cited. This is a garage to enclose vehicles for, again, a seven-person household, and if there were no garage there, then the vehicles would, uh, be, um, uh, relegated to surface parking, exposed surface parking. This would be subject to BPDA design review, uh, specifically with, uh, respect to the size and functionality of the garage, were this board's, uh, would this, uh, were this board to see fit to, uh, grant the two requested variances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just for the record, uh, Mr. D'Amico from BZB, Boston Transportation Department, has spoke on this. Uh, he said that it should, at most, be allowed for only three cars, and it should be a curb cut. They should close the curb cut on Morrissey Boulevard.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, so, close, close curb cut on Morrissey and three cars, okay? Okay, um, so give... Okay, um, so given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Tom. I just want to interject quickly. Uh, I just wanted to confirm for the board that Mr. Cindall has been here for this hearing.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Cindall. Okay, so it is a sev- it is a seven member board. Um, so may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve with both BPDA and BTD design review.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, Eric.
Eric's opposed. Any other opposition? May I hear your voices, please? Who was that?
Opposed, Sheri.
Any other opposition? Um, so there's, uh, I, I two him in, in opposition. So the motion doesn't carry. It's been denied.
All right.
Okay, next case.
Okay, I would, the gentleman for thirty-three Eastman Street was on the phone the whole time. Um, so I'm gonna go back to that one.
That's fine, thank you.
BOA one one nine four six seven three thirty-three Eastman Street in Ward Seven. Uh, art of violation, uh, Article sixty-five, Section Nine, insufficient side yard setback and foot requirement. Name and address for the record.
Is he caller twenty-two?
I believe he's downloading, he's downloading WebEx on his phone. I'm not sure if he's calling in or if he's still trying, but his name's Eric Bine.
If he's on and he called. Caller twenty-three, are you here for this case?
Okay, let's, uh.
Sorry about that. Well, I'll, I'll wait to the end.
No problem. Let's go ahead.
BOA nine six one zero one seven one eighty-two Sydney Street and Ward Thirteen. The violation, uh, Article sixty-five, Section Eight, use regulation forbidden, Article sixty-five, Section Thirty-nine, screening and buffering requiring requirement. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, dimensional regulations, insufficient rear yard setback. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, insufficient lot size, Article fifty-sixty-five, Section Nine, insufficient side yard sex setback. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, excessive FAR, Article sixty-five, Section Nine, front yard setback, front porch. Uh, the purpose is to construct a new four unit residential building as per the plans attached. Name and address for the record.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulgeni, ten fourth Road in Braintree. Uh, with me today is James Baker, who is the owner developer, together with James Christopher, who is the team architect. Um, so this is one eighty-two, one eighty-two Sydney Street in Dorchester. The zoning is two family five thousand. This unit size is four thousand one hundred eighty-five square feet.
I'm sorry, so, sorry, uh, Mr. Pulgeni, so this is sixty, um, this is Sydney Street, right?
That is correct.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, what was the square footage again?
Uh, four thousand one hundred eighty-five square feet.
Okay, go ahead.
And as Mr. Ruggiero stated, proposals to build a new four unit condominium building on a vacant lot with five off street parking spaces. This lot is located just a few blocks from the JFK train station. Um, I'll touch on the violations, Madam Chair. Uh, rear yard allowed is thirty. We are ten to eleven and a half feet. Lot size, we just went through is five thousand, we're four thousand one hundred eighty-five square feet. Use, um, is violation two F zoning, multi-family proposal. Side yard is ten, we're at five and thirteen feet, four inches. FAR is point five and we're at one point four nine. Front yard is fifteen and we meet the modal. Um, the unit sizes are, unit one is thirteen hundred and ten square feet, which is a two bed, two bath. Unit two is twelve hundred and sixty-eight square feet, two bed, two bath. Unit three thirteen hundred and ninety-three square feet, three bed, two bath. And unit four is fourteen hundred, two square feet, three bed, two bath. Um, there is a roof terraces that were just for the two top units and not roof decks, the terraces. Uh, this went through a community process, Madam Chair, and we received the approval from the Seven Hill.
Mr. Pulgen, uh, tell us again about the parking.
Um, so we, there's, I'm sorry, so, um, we comply with parking. We have five parking spaces for four units.
So can we see how that's laid out? What plan would it be on?
I think it's right on the screen right now.
Right there. Okay, it's all underground, okay? Um, and the curb cut is, if you're looking at the house on the right-hand side, okay? And there's, is, there's no basement occupancy?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, there is living space. Uh, most of the basement is exposed working with the grade on the site. So unit one and unit two are bi-level units with the majority of the living space on the upper level with, um, basement, uh, spaces on the, on the lower, uh, bedroom spaces on the lower level. Um, but it is a walkout to the garage and to the rear. So there's full windows and doors.
And are, are any of the units handicapped accessible?
Uh, that, we could, we could incorporate a lift to make the, the first living level accessible, Madam Chair.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are good. Um, uh, Mr. Christopher is correct in terms of his, uh, explanation of the grade. It does drop down. Um, so there doesn't appear to be any below grade living. Um, and I think it's consistent with the, the height of, uh, some of the other buildings along Sydney Street.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Just for the record, we have, just for the record, we have letters of support in the file.
Thank you. Is anybody here to, to speak either in support or in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Speaking on behalf of my predecessor, Pat Fendell, for this project. The applicant notified abutters and presented to the local civic. At this time, our office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
I'm sure I do have one raised hand. Um, Nancy, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi Nancy. Okay. I have no additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, who comes to our record support.
Okay. Um, um, Ms., uh, Ms. Ambassador, so there's nobody else that you can see?
No additional raised hands here.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to support, I, I think with, um, BPDA design review specifically looking at, uh, the ground floor level as it meets the ground and as well, uh, I think, uh, they will need to incorporate accessibility for a unit. Um, so if they could work with the BPDA on resolution of that front elevation, that'd be great.
There are seconds?
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling next case, BOA one one six 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 two seven sixty Stanley Street in Ward Fifteen. Violations are Article sixty-five, Section Eight, forbidden thirteen family use. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, dimensional regulations, front yard. Uh, Article sixty-five, Section Nine, FAR, FAR. Article sixty-five, Section forty-two point three, traffic visibility across corner. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, building height excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, Section sixty-five dash forty-one, off street loading requirement. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, side yard insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, rear yard insufficient. The purpose is to construct a new three-story residential building. Says with thirteen units, updated to eight units as of March twenty-twenty-one, uh, with off-street parking as per attached plans. To combine the two existing parcels, one five zero one nine six three zero zero consisting of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five square feet and parcel one five one zero one six nine two zero zero, four thousand ninety-nine square feet to create a new system of eight thousand ninety-five square feet. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulgeni, uh, ten fourth Road in Braintree. Uh, with me this morning is Chris Poli, who's the owner of the property, together with James Christopher, who is the architect. Um, so sixty Stanley Street is located in the zoning sub-district at two F six thousand. It's currently, um, a dilapidated vacant lot. And as Mr. Ruggiero stated, approximate, uh, lot size is eighty-one hundred square feet. Um, this was, a- as he said when he was reading the violations, many of which are no longer violations, but the proposal was to build a new three-story, reduce from thirteen units to the community process to eight units with nine.
So, Mr. Pulgeni, tell us which violations have been eliminated.
Uh, well, wrap it up, loading dock, because we're, we're only dealing with eight units right now. So that obviously comes right up. Um, and, and if they're not eliminated, obviously the FAR comes down because the, the project came down from thirteen units to eight units, Madam Chair.
So the use is, the use is still forbidden?
Right, I'll go through that, yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Use is, um, obviously it's a multi-family residential in a two F zone. Um, front yard setback is fifteen feet. Uh, we're at one foot and three feet, which is consistent with what was built in the neighborhood. FAR point four, we're at one point three eight. As Mr. Ruggiero stated, in height, uh, requirement is thirty-five, two and a half feet. We're at thirty feet with three stories. So we meet this, we meet the height requirement just, um, exceed the stories. Side yard's ten, we're at seven. And then one, um, we have a street, that one foot side yard is not abutting in a neighborhood. It, but it abuts, uh, Kane Street, which is a, um, a street that runs up the side of this. And parking is one point two five for four to nine units. We're proposing nine, uh, nine parking spaces for this proposal. Um, do you want me to go to the, the unit sizes, Madam Chair?
Yes, the unit sizes, and please tell us how parking, parking works on the site.
Okay, I'll go through the unit sizes and I'll turn it over to James Christopher to talk about the parking. Uh, unit one is a two bed, one bath, that's nine hundred and eighty-three square feet. Unit two is two beds, one bath, nine hundred and eighty-three square feet. Unit three is two bath, um, a three bed, two bath, that's twelve hundred and thirty square feet. Unit four is two bed, two bath, eleven thirty-four square feet. Unit five, three bed, two bath, twelve hundred and thirty square feet. Unit six, three bed, two bath, twelve sixty square feet. Unit seven, two bed, two bath, eleven ninety square feet. And unit eight is three bed, two bath, uh, twelve hundred and eighty-one square feet.
So the two bedrooms range in a, in size from nine eighty-three to eleven ninety and the three bedrooms, go ahead?
Yeah, and the three beds are twelve sixty and twelve eighty-one. That's correct.
Twelve sixty and twelve eighty-one, okay. Um, okay, and tell us again how parking works?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Um, the park will be accessed off of Kane Street. Um, part of the building will be cantilevered so that the vehicle, um, will enter off of Kane Street, pull nose into the building, um, with some columns, um, underneath the cantilever portion, and then the building will be open to the rear, uh, with a thirty-foot rear yard setback.
Please tell Ms. Edwards which, uh, sheet we should be looking at?
Um, it'd be the, the, uh, landscape plan. So if you go up, Ms. Edwards, it'd be at the, the first set of drawings. Keep going, keep going, keep going, up. Right here, down. One more. Right there.
Okay.
So you can see that the dotted hash indicates the overhang of the building above with the post below and the parking spaces, which would be partially under the building and then the rear yard behind it.
And is there a roof deck proposed for this building too?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, there is. Uh, but the roof deck is, um, it's, it's exclusive to the top three units. So it's, uh, and it's setback behind a parapet. And again, this always came out through the community process. They want, they did not want a common roof deck. They wanted exclusive use, uh, roof decks for those units.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the, the plans are consistent with, uh, what the applicant is, uh, proposing. I, could, could you, uh, I guess, speak to the, the front yard setback? I mean, the, the, the neighborhood is really a, a series of, you know, I don't know if they're ones or twos, but, um, buildings it within their site. And you're pushing up right on to Stanley Street and Kane Street, which is not consistent with any of your abutting houses or neighbors. Um, I guess I'm interested to understand that a little bit more.
Uh, sure, we, we worked very closely with the neighbors on the siding of this building. We did have, um, several iterations. Um, we felt it important that the building addressed the corners because it is on two corners, um, and that it be prominent. Um, the, the primary concern for the abutters was screening and buffering on the ends and the rear of the property. Um, so in, in order to accommodate the parking at the rear, um, and several iterations later, the building was a little bit larger. We had the parking interior. Um, this was the option that we came in, that we arrived at and presented with the community group and worked closely with them, uh, which was well received. Excuse me. Um, and it, there is, there's not a lot of, uh, modal on this section of Stanley, but we do feel that it's appropriate siding in the building.
Thank you.
Pulgeni, how many affordable units in this, uh, building?
Um, Madam Chair, there's not any affordable units. Um, it's a eight unit building. As I stated before, uh, we went with a thirteen unit building, which would have, would provide affordability, um, through the community process that Mr. Christopher just talked about. Um, they felt that they wanted this.
That was mostly a tongue in cheek, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry. They, they wanted homeownership, Madam Chair. So we, uh, they wanted condominiums for this area.
Okay, so these are condos, okay? Um, any questions from the board?
Uh, I just have one, sorry, one other question. Um, so when the, the building, maybe I missed this, I apologize. When the building came down from thirteen to the current number of units, did you say that the square footage did not reduce or did reduce?
Well, we did, we did reduce the square footage. We brought it in from the rear. We, we sided it more towards Stanley Street. Um, and we dropped on the first floor. Uh, if you look at the, the current first floor plan, the, the lobby with the media room and the bike storage room was originally a unit. And as we were working with the community, they were, they were discussing that they prefer to see, um, you know, some, some building amenity space there. And that's how we arrived at this iteration of the plan.
And is this, uh, an elevator building?
There is not an elevator in this building.
And so I'm assuming that the first floor units are all handicapped accessible?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Can you speak to the landscape plan?
Uh, sure. So we've, we've incorporated, um, you know, some, some small shrubs and, uh, street trees at the front of the property, uh, shrubs where possible. And then we were proposed to incorporate, uh, screening and buffering on the right end of the building we're facing on Stanley Street to use some larger trees and shrubs there. Um, we are, there's not a large swath of open green spaces, but we'll absolutely work with the BPDA on, uh, plant selection.
Uh, Madam Chair, the, the, um, I realize Mr. Hampton's not here, but the BPDA, uh, comment is that they recommend denial due to excessive density. I guess my question is, was that based on it being thirteen units? Um, uh, I mean, their comment, their comment said updated to eight residential units. So I, I believe they still consider it excessive, excessively dense. Mr. Robinson, is that a judgment you would agree with?
Yes, um, I do. And, and I feel like it just, it just doesn't necessarily fit in with the context of the neighborhood. Uh, I, I feel like this is, is a great site for development. Certainly, uh, in support of that, I just feel like it's, just feels still too dense and too pushed up to the street edge, um, because of that density, I think, so.
Got it. And this is a two F six thousand zone, so, um.
If that's a big thing, Madam Chair, if I interrupt, if that's a big issue, uh, we would gladly redesign the front and pull it back and come before the board if you would issue a deferral for the today.
Yes, because as you can hear, our questions have been walking around with the density.
Yeah.
And trying every which way to kind of hint at that. Um, so, um, go ahead.
Well, I, I would make, I mean, at least I would, uh, uh, make a motion for a deferral. And, and I think, I think there is a, a project here. I just think this one is just still a little bit too big.
I'll, I'll second that.
Uh, uh, motion, is, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please?
November, November ninth at twelve thirty.
Okay, so gives you plenty of time to rework it. Thanks a lot. I will see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, calling next case, BOA one one seven three six four seven, one seventy-three Westville Street in Ward Fifteen. Violations are Article sixty-five, Section Eight, use regulation three family is forbidden. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, lot area insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, lot width insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, floor eighty, floor area ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, building height excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, rear yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section forty-two point two, conformity with an existing building alignment. Uh, Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, off-street parking and loading required. Purpose seeking to erect a three-family residential dwelling space, uh, dwelling with three parking spaces on a vacant lawn. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Discounter.
Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street. With me, I have the applicants Judy Akpin and Jean Raymond, the owners of the lot, and also Talia Canistra, who's the architect on the project from Port One. As was mentioned, and you can see in the rendering in front of you, this is an existing vacant lot. If we just pause on that picture right there, I'm sorry. My clients own the two-family directly next to it where they live. They are proposing to erect a three-unit building. This would be a rental building with three tandems parking spaces on an existing curb cut. If you're looking at this picture, you'll see the curb cut on the right side. The lot size, as was mentioned, is three thousand square feet, which is similar to most of the lots in that area. The height proposed is thirty-two feet, two inches. The floor plan, these are all three-bedroom, three-bath, family-sized units. All of the units are one thousand one hundred and ninety-five square feet. Just to go over the floor plan, the first floor would house the three-bed, two-bath. Again, those are eleven ninety-five. That would also house through a separate entrance, the sprinkler room. That would be accessed through a door on the left side of the building. And that's an exterior entry only. The second floor would house the second three-bed, two-bath. And the third floor would house the third three-bed and two-bath. Both the second and third floor have front decks on them. The first floor does not, obviously. Just to go over the violations that were listed. This is a two-F district, although most of the surrounding buildings are three units. And we are proposing three F, so there is a use violation. Minimum lot size is five thousand. We are proposing three. The lot width and frontage required would be fifty, and we are at forty. FAR is point five, we're at one point three eight. We do, we are below the thirty-five-foot height requirement, so we do meet that in feet. However, it's a two-and-a-half-story requirement, and we are at three, which is common, as you can see up and down that street. The side setback is required is ten, and we meet that on the right side. That is where our parking, where our curb cut entrance is. We are at ten foot seven. However, on the left side, we are at five feet, although the building jogs in. So in a portion, it does reach ten feet, but we were sighted at five. Rear yard setback, thirty would be required. We have five, but again, the building jogs in, bringing it up to ten. And we do have a green space area back there. Parking, because they are tandem spaces, you can see up and down that street, there are, there is a lot of parking that go along with this building.
So if I get this right, where is your open space? If your rear yard varies from five to ten feet and only the top two units have decks, how is your open space met for your lower ground floor?
So there is an area in the back of open space. And then we're also, so you can see, I don't know if we can pull that up. It does jog in in the back for a ten-foot area of green space and then five around the rest. And then we could also, you know, we were planning on doing a paved driveway because it goes back pretty far to fit the tandem cars. We could use a section of that as well.
Okay, can you please tell Ms. Edwards which drawings she should pull up so we can see the parking spaces?
Yes, so if we.
In relation to the abutting property?
Oh, so you could see the actual layout of the parking on A dash one oh one. So it would keep more towards the beginning, right there, sorry, yeah. So that, you can see the, on the, if you're staring at the left-hand side, three tandem spaces laid out. You can see where the building jogs in, in the rear. You can see the green space area, a walkway on the right, where the condensers are.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The, excuse me, the plans are good. You know, I'm struggling a little bit with the rear yard setback. Looking in the context, the rear abutting property on the other street, which I think is Leroy Street, is a smaller building. But so there's a little bit more relief. I think the front is consistent with the street and the height and the sizes. Just wish we had a little bit more rear yard setback. But in general terms, I think the project's pretty good.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise De Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record and support the applicant. They've met with the community and the association, and they have support from both as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McEckern, City Council. Frank Baker's office would like to go on record and support.
Madam Chairman, Board, Dustin Gardner, behalf of City Council. Andrea Campbell's office. This is in Councilor Baker's district, but right on the line across from us. So we'd also like to offer our support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
So given that information, let's see, and this is Westville. And the BPDA is proposing approval with design review. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review and would request one more look and see if we could maybe increase the rear yard setback as they go through design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Calling next case, BOA one one six zero seven seven four twenty-five Hillot Street in Ward twenty. Violations to Article sixty-seven, Section thirty-two, Off-street parking and loading requirement. Article sixty-seven, Section nine, Insufficient Additional Lot Area Per Unit. And Article sixty-seven, Section nine, Insufficient Open Space. Improved, purposes to improve the existing attached garage to be used as a living space for the handicapped homeowner, no change in height or size, no structural work, meet energy code, meet building code. Install heat and hook up bathroom sewage pipe to existing house sewer. Name and address for the record.
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Tom. Could I, might not be here on this one? Just wanted to confirm with Mr. Kindell that he recused four oh one A William T. Morrissey Boulevard.
I'm sorry?
I was just hoping to confirm with Mr. Kindell that he recused himself on one two one zero zero three, BOA one two one zero zero three two four oh one A William T. Morrissey Boulevard.
That was correct.
Thank you, Mr. Kindell.
Thank you.
Is the applicant on the Hillot Street?
Do not see the name, nor did they check.
Should I move forward?
Yes, please.
Okay. Calling next case, BOA one one six five eight two two nine Everett Street in Ward twenty-two. Violations to Article fifty-one, Section eight, Use Regulation, Multifamily Dwelling Unit is Forbidden. Article fifty-one, Section nine, Lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section nine, Floor area ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section nine, Height requirements is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section nine, Height requirement is excessive in stories and feet. Article fifty-one, Section nine, Usable Open Spaces is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section nine, Side yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, Off-street parking requirements insufficient. Articles fifty-one, Section fifty-six, Off-street parking design maneuverability. Change of occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a seven-family dwelling. Add vertical addition to create a fourth story. Add rear addition. Add five off-street parking spaces at grade in the rear to be accessed via existing curb cuts. Name and address for the record.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Austin. I represent the property owners City Realty Development, project architects at Carlsson Design. And Tonya Carrier from Carlson joins us, from Carlsson, joins us this morning. The proposal is to erect a vertical and rear additions to the existing two-family dwelling located at nine Everett Street and change its occupancy to a seven-unit dwelling. The lot size is four thousand seven.
Hold on, Mr. Moranci, please tell us what the zoning district is for this area?
Literally my next sentence. The lot size is four thousand seven hundred and ninety-six square feet, and it is located in a three F four thousand zoning sub-district under Article fifty-one, the Alston-Brighton neighborhood article. Madam Chair, the building would change from its present three stories to four stories. Unit one would be a one-bedroom unit of eight hundred eighty-five square feet. Unit two, a one-bedroom unit of seven hundred sixteen square feet. Unit three, a two-bedroom at eight hundred eighty-eight square feet. Unit four, a one-bedroom, seven hundred sixteen square feet. Unit five, a two-bedroom of eight hundred eighty-eight square feet. Unit six, a one-bedroom, six hundred twelve square feet. And unit seven, a two-bedroom of eight hundred seventy-four square feet. Although this project is not subject to an IDP requirement, it's seven units, five units being added. My clients have pledged to offer one of the one-bedroom units at or below the one-plus Boston pricing threshold, which will allow it to be made affordable to a couple earning a hundred percent of the AMI with only a three percent down payment. Five parking spaces would be added to the rear yard area, where there's currently parking in both the front and the side yards now. The front yard will benefit from a thoughtful landscaping plan as well as a portion of the rear and left side yards, where there will be a new patio.
Hold on, Mr. Moranci, Ms. Edwards. Can you flip the drawings around so we can get a sense of how this building works on the street, please?
And what is being shown there are the floor plans, Madam Chair? Obviously, it would be helped if they could be rotated clockwise.
And if you could, please zoom in a bit so we can get a sense of what's happening?
And the smaller units in the front, which are on the right side now, those are the one-bedroom units. And in the rear are the larger two-bedroom units.
And so it would be a side entrance to the building? There's no front door in essence to the building?
No, as we can see there, it's kind of tough looking at the plans. There's the first floor at the bottom, as the plans are now situated.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. I'll be honest, I sort of choked when I first heard the two to seven on the density change. However, it is a transitional, I think, moment on the street. There's a much larger building under construction or going up on the right-hand side. And I think, if I'm correct, Mr. Moranci, the front yard is basically remaining as is. So that's consistent with the buildings to its left. And then the roof lines are changing a little bit, but fairly consistent with the style. It's just getting a little, there's another, obviously adding some more upper-level space. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Robinson. And you're right on all counts. The front yard, as I said, now actually has been used for vehicular parking, and that's going to get a full landscape makeover. And as you also note, the actual neighborhood context here is critically important to properly considering the proposed project. Nine Everett Street is located just over a hundred feet from Everett Street's intersection with North Beacon Street. Across the street, which is zoned local industrial, is an area characterized by large-scale commercial and residential development, both existing and planned. Specifically, this is not far from Boston Landing and associated sites. Directly across Everett at thirty-seven North Beacon is a five-story, seventy-two-unit apartment building, whose construction was just completed this summer. And abutting the property on the right, as viewed from Everett Street, at one Everett Street, is a five-story, seventeen-unit building. So it is very much a neighborhood in transition from when it was originally zoned three F four thousand thirty years ago.
Thank you. No other questions?
Can you speak to the landscape plan?
Yes, one was submitted. I'm not sure where it is on the plan set being displayed. Hopefully, it is there. But there is a full landscaping plan that was done by Verdant Landscape Architects.
Please tell us what sheet it is? Because I know there's been difficulty rotating the plans. So just tell us what sheet it's so that we get a sense of what's happening.
It's, so it was produced by a landscape architect, so it's not part of the architectural drawing. So it would not necessarily be embedded in the architectural drawings. So I'm not certain whether it is in possession of the board.
Mr. Robinson, is it part of?
No, I did not see, I did not see that. However, I am, did you say Verdant Landscape?
Yes, yes.
So I am familiar with Verdant. And, you know, I actually think they do nice work. So I can't say that's happening here, but hopefully there will be a robust plan.
Can he just speak to the plan? I know it's not, we can't see it visually, but tell us what you anticipate.
Certainly. Importantly, the existing front retaining wall, which is rather handsome, is going to be kept in place. It's going to be repaired. The entire front area of the building will be landscaped. The existing street tree is going to be protected and remain on-site in front of the building. There will be two trees planted in the front, in the front side yard, along with the planted lawn area and planters. There would be a bordering aluminum fence by Ameristar. The permeable paving areas will include winter marvel, winter marvel pavers and granite blend pavers. And there will be two additional trees in the back. Actually, one of them is an existing crab apple tree. That will be protected and will remain after construction. And there's also a permeable paved patio area in the far right, left rear corner of the building in the parking area, where there are five proposed new parking spaces.
And apropos to that, can you please tell us where, what plan we should be looking at to see the parking plan? So we just get a sense that, to connect to Ms. Panado's question, how is that parking space being sheltered by a tree or shaded by a tree or whatever?
There's an architectural site plan that's numbered A dash zero two zero, which should be in the plan set that the board has.
I think it's the second drawing from the front.
And I do have comments from Mr. D'Amico on the parking plan.
Why don't you put that in the record, please?
Okay. This is from Mr. D'Amico of Boston Transportation Department. Parking plan as submitted does not work. I request that spaces one and three be removed and spaces two and four be parked on a forty-five-degree angle for adequate and safe maneuverability.
Okay, so that essentially brings it down to three parking spaces, based on his comment? Mr. Rogiro?
I suppose I'm trying to see the parking plan, right?
Okay, and Mr. Moranci, looking at the plan right now, is that proposed fencing against the rear abutter?
Yes, the site perimeter would be fenced.
Okay, so there's, but there is, however, no screening and buffering to protect the rear yard of the rear abutter?
There is, there's, again, the Verdant Landscape Plan is not included with the plan set. But there is, in the rear would be a wood fence, either solid wood board or picket. Front fencing and along the right side, the parking area would be aluminum fencing, again, which looks like wrought iron. But in the back, there would be, there would be a wood fence for those three parking spaces in the rear.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted a butters meeting on April eighth. Prior to that meeting and afterwards, the applicant continued to work with direct abutters. The applicant also went on to the Alston Civic Association. The applicant also went on to the Allston Civic Association, worked very closely on design, landscaping considerations, parking considerations. They are in close proximity to the Boston Landing, just over the bridge. So, yeah, they ended up achieving support from the ACA and support from a number of director butters as well. So we think this is appropriate for the area. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have letters from the ACA and director butters in support.
Thank you.
Annabella, you've been unmuted.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. We support the fact that they are keeping the, the character of the house instead of, like, the neighbors across and next door that really just built a box building and that they do have an affordable unit and that these are, in fact, condo units versus rentals on the, on the other units being built. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Moore McCray from Councilor Braden's office. We'd like to go on record as being in support of this project. We particularly appreciate the proponents' participation in the, in, and including an affordable unit through the OnePlus program. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA's design review. I think specifically looking, obviously, the parking needs a little bit of work and also ensure that there is adequate screening and buffering for the parking in the rear, to the rear butters and to the side of butters.
Mr. Robinson, would you mind adding BPD, BTD, excuse me, to that review?
No, of course, BTD review as well.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I realize my employer, Colliers, represents City Realty on another project, so I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay, and for the record, Ms. Panato is recusing, has recused. I'm just making a note here. Thus, she will not be participating in the vote. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for nine thirty, BOA one one eight zero nine four six. Twelve, fourteen to twenty-two Birch Street in Ward twenty. Violation to Article sixty-seven, Section eleven, cannabis establishment in the, in kitchen use is conditional. Article sixty-seven, Section eleven, any cannabis establishment shall be sighted at least one half mile from another existing cannabis establishment. Change of occupancy to a commercial cannabis kitchen and retail bakery shop, no structural work will take place. Name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Kijana Rose. Business address, twenty-two Birch Street in Roselandale, also a resident of Roselandale from one eighty-two Papa Street. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Pleased to be here today to present to you guys. We are proposing cannabis product manufacturing, commercial kitchen, and retail bakery and apothecary at twenty-two Birch Street. Mostly, we're here today to talk about the buffer zone issue, if we could.
Hold on, I'm just trying to understand which frontage you'll be taking over?
Twenty-two Street.
So I'm looking at the, the map, and it wants to take me to fourteen. What's, what is the space? Is it the yoga space that you're taking over?
It's the one next door. It was previously Investa Realty.
Oh, it is a realty space?
It's a corner. Yeah.
It's a corner in that pathway to Sophia's?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, okay.
So mostly today, we're here to discuss the buffer zone issue. There is proposed.
Yes, so hold on. You know, we have our usual standard questions that we need to ask.
Okay.
So, so can you just talk through how this space is going to work? So this is going to be a commercial cannabis kitchen and retail bakery shop, right? There will be no other forms of cannabis being sold in it?
There will be cannabis baked goods and also pre-rolls, infused pre-rolls, herbal-infused pre-rolls. So there will be cannabis flour and cannabis baked goods.
Okay, so just tell us then how you're going to, what the flow is for somebody who's entering this space?
Okay. Someone coming into the space from the front, if they're coming in for retail, they will come in from the front location for twenty-two Birch Street. If they're coming into the space to, you know, have an appointment with us, it's going to be an appointment-based operation, and we'll also have a takeout. So people coming for takeout will come and pick up from the back where, across from Sophia's is. In the front, they'll come in, they'll probably be seated until one of our concierges is ready to sit with them. They'll have an appointment that would be.
I'm sorry, I'm, you're, I'm having a little bit of a hard time keeping up. So you're going to have a retail bakery shop on the first floor?
Right.
Cannabis operation is going to be in the basement?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so it's double-layered?
Yes.
So if I want to go into, so you're going to be appointment-based. If I'm coming here to pick up something, how, tell me just, it's, so it's going to be waiting for me in the back of the retail bakery store?
Correct.
Or is there another way of getting from the basement so that, in fact, there's a strong barrier between the cannabis product, product and the bakery product?
Yeah, so all the baked goods will be downstairs, but the takeout section will be in the back of that. So if you're, if you're looking at the design on the left of this slide, so the back of the house, so the top of the picture, the top of the layout, that's the back of the house. So all of that will be set up where all the takeout orders will just be lined up and ready to go. We'll have security back there. We'll have the person who's designated back there to be handling the takeout. And then in front, we'll have the same operation where they'll have a security person in front, and they'll come in, and those people who come in through the front might actually have an appointment where they'll sit down with someone, discuss what they're buying that day, that kind of thing.
Okay. And then, so if you were going to be taking a product to the takeout space, is there a dumb way to going up, or does somebody walk it through?
Somebody walks it up. We have a runner who goes from the kitchen and runs it upstairs. Once the order is done, prepared, checked out, then they run it upstairs.
Okay, and so, so this pick, the, the rear pickup will be during all seasons, including the winter?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and your hours of operation?
Our hours of operation for retail will be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from nine a.m. to ten p.m. And for product manufacturing, we'll be there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday from eight a.m. to eight p.m.
So, so basically, sales are only Friday to Sunday from what time again?
From nine a.m. to ten p.m. Sales to the public, because we'll also be selling to the dispensaries as well.
And tell us about the sale to dispensaries. When will your pickup vans come to pick up product to take them elsewhere?
They'll be scattered throughout Monday, Wednes, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, but we'll have pickups and deliveries going out every day. Part of our brand is that our edibles will be fresh, so I think there will be deliveries going out every day.
Okay. So fresh edibles daily, okay, and, okay, and nine to ten p.m. on a Sun, on Friday through Sunday, okay? Is anything even open till ten p.m.? I guess bistro is open and brado is open, okay? Okay, and we know that you're within one half mile of the other one up the street?
Yes.
But it feels like it's an entirely different neighborhood.
You took the word out of my mouth. Entirely different neighborhood and concept, actually. We won't have any product overlap with that store because we'll only be selling our own products in the store. Also, they've not started any construction on that site, and if you go back and read their proposal that they made to you, their proposal was essentially dependent on other cannabis shops being open in the neighborhood by the time they opened.
Yeah, I'm a Roselandale resident, so I'm familiar with, with the, the ins and outs. So the other question I think that I need to ask you is that the street is, has now become a seating area? So how are you going to do pickups and deliveries if that's true?
Well, you mean for the product manufacturing?
Yep. Because I think they've closed off the street. I don't know if it's going to be summer or all year round to have.
They have. It's going to be closed off all year round. There's two ways that we can get in to do our deliveries. One is that we can pull into Birch because we still can pull in right there and just not go any further. It's blocked off about halfway up the street. So we can pull in right there. We can also go back. We've been, I have been talking with my friend up the street about potentially going back in to get deliveries, but again, we really don't anticipate that being a big issue. We think we're just going to go in from Birch Street. We actually think we'll be doing most of the deliveries ourselves, and it's not like a major, we're not going to have big vans or anything like that.
Okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. I think, you know, my only question, which is, it's, looks to be tricky, you know, the building is not accessible, so there's steps up to the main floor, and I guess it's, it's one of the things I'm noticing, and there will be no public access to the lower level, correct? That's only for operations and back of house.
Yeah, there will be no access to the lower floor, and, yeah, there, there, it's, it's not, to go inside to the retail location, unfortunately, right now, that area is not handicap accessible. The whole building is not.
But you're appointment-only, so I guess if somebody has some, needs some extra help.
We absolutely accommodate them however we could.
No other questions? Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? So what is your signage going to say? Just because, you know, you worry about kids going in to buy a muffin or something, you know?
That's right. Our signage will actually just be our logo. It, it won't even say that we're a cannabis bakery. It'll just be our logo and I and I Rose Garden. And our, our logo is the Rose of Venus, so it has no kind of cannabis insignia or any kind of relation to cannabis. The only way young kids would know that our shop was a cannabis shop is if you or the parents tell them, because we won't tell them.
Okay, okay, cool. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Uja Nocchi. I'm the neighbor liaison for Roselandale, and we are in support of this project.
Welcome. Because I know Mr. Coffin Joe recently left, so go ahead.
Oh, I said, I said we are in support of the project.
Thank you.
All right, Jordan, you've been unmuted. Can you stick me a minute? Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Frey is here from Councilor Ricardo Roy's office. We'd like to go on the record in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review for signage.
Second.
So hold on, hold on, and as we usually do?
Oh, disposition only, yep.
This applicant only?
Yep.
And we will also just emphasize that it is Friday through Sunday so that there's no confusion, right? Nine to ten p.m. Right?
Yep.
There's a second from Tyrone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Rogiro?
Do you want me to go back and do the nine thirty?
Mr. Rogiro, let's go and see if there's any deferrals for eleven.
Okay. All right, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for eleven o'clock?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Twelve oh nine Bennington Street.
I'll call this in, and then I'm going to recuse myself. Calling BOA one two one three eight one eight. Address is twelve oh nine Bennington Street.
Good morning, Madam Chair. We are requesting a short deferral on this matter. We have a pool of outstanding issues with the butters that we believe that we may be able to work through with the change of plans and also to address the parking concerns that the BPDA had brought up.
Okay, just for the record, I just need to make very clear that everybody understands that Mr. Rogiro is recusing himself, thus, thus will not be working, not be voting, excuse me. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Bloom, can you give us a date, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. The deferral date will be November ninth, twenty twenty-one, at twelve thirty p.m.
Thank you. This is a call out. Any other requests for deferrals or withdrawals for eleven o'clock?
There is a raised hand. One second. Carmine, are you here to give a deferral?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
She withdrew.
What, what's the address?
Twelve, twelve oh nine Bennington Street.
That, that case was just deferred to eleven nine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back then to nine thirties and just.
Okay, back to nine thirties. Is thirty-three Eastman Street here? Eric?
Denise, is, is that caller on?
His name would be Eric Bryan. I know he let me know that he was on the call. I think he's calling in from a phone, Jessica.
Okay, I did see him on earlier, but let me check.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let me call, let me call the case in for the record. BOA one one nine four six seven three, thirty-three Eastman Street in Ward seven. Violations to Article sixty-five, Section nine, insufficient side yard setback. This plan is to add a eight-foot-by-six-foot shed dormer.
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, please put your name and address on the record.
Eric Byrne, Green Men Builders under contractor. The address is for thirty-three Eastman Street, Ward seven.
So tell us about this shed dormer.
Okay, so we, we started to renovate the third floor. We planned to put a bathroom in there. When we demoed the sheetrock, we found some, a lot of rot in section to the rafters, which led us to have a conversation with the homeowners about possibly, if we had to replace the rafters, then we were putting in a small shed dormer to allow us to have a legal bathroom in there regarding head height with it being on the third floor.
And this is a single family?
This is a single family, correct.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good, very minimal addition of space.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise Santos here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record and support this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Give a thought. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Rogiro, did we hear two forty-seven Newbury Street?
That's my next, no, that's, that's next. Is the applicant here for two forty-seven Newbury?
Yes.
Anybody from the gym?
Yes, yes.
All right, let me call the case in. BOA one two one three one five four two forty-seven Newbury Street. Violations to Article eight, Section seven, the use is conditional for fitness gym, the added gym studios to the existing occupancy. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Romell Sandy. Address, two forty-seven Newbury Street.
So, Mr. Sandy, please tell us what you're proposing to do?
So I recently got the space in June, and it was an iPhone repair store. I wanted to leave the floor plan as-is and put in the rubber flooring for the gym as well as turf for, like, sled exercises. So on the floor plan, what you see, the red grid would be the forty-foot of turf, artificial grass, and then everything else around that's white would be covered in rubber flooring.
Okay, so, so the way this works is you basically, and so the building is. Okay, so, um, so the way this works is you basically, and so the building is, so what will be your hours of operation?
So my hours of operation will be from seven AM to seven PM or eight PM. I don't, I do not take clients after eight PM.
And all days?
Every day, on the weekends, the hours of operation will be from seven to six.
Okay, Saturday and Sunday. And is this by appointment or how many people you expect in the space? So is this one-on-one coaching? How does it work?
Yes, so this is private training or small group training. So a total people in this space comfortably is six. The architect, the architect designed that I could fit ten people in here at one time. But this is one-on-one training and small group training, so I don't expect more than six people in the studio, including myself, at one time.
Okay. And just because we've heard this in other places and it sounds like you have residential occupancy above, will there be any noise reduction materials put in place?
Yes, so I will be purchasing, I think there's foam for the walls, so the, the sound cannot travel through the walls. The landlord did instruct me that all of the flooring and the ceilings are soundproof.
Okay.
I do know that there is a seventy-decibel limit in the area. So I will make sure that all my speakers are not higher than seventy decibels.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine. Can, if maybe the proponent could just, are, are these, it's sort of all shown as red in terms of the walls. Are, are you adding these walls in terms of the layouts or are these all existing conditions?
No, everything is already existing. What I'm adding is the sound for the wall, for the walls and the rubber flooring.
Okay. That's what I thought, just wanted to double-check. No, no other questions. Thank you.
Any other question, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Molly Griffin with the Office of Neighborhood Services. There was a Butters meeting held on Wednesday, July seventh, twenty-twenty-one, with no major concerns raised from Butters. The applicant also met with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, who do not oppose their proposal. So at this time, our office would like to go on record in support.
We have several letters of support in the file.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here for twenty-five Hillock Street?
What's the name on that? I'm going back to see what.
I have, but Fadi?
Fadi?
Abaka? Abika?
They're not on, they're not on. I don't see the applicant's name.
And there's nothing on the plans, okay? So just let's make a motion then.
Make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's now, it'll be eleven-thirty in a few minutes. We will take a ten-minute break. So we will resume at eleven-thirty-five and we will go directly to, to the recommendations and get that out of the way before we resume with the eleven o'clock hearings. Meeting is now adjourned.